...on November tenth, under planning and zoning commission. The quarter please. Before I ask for road count, I'd like to introduce our newest member, Joe Reeves. Welcome him to our new member.
Thank you.
On the board. If you would call up.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Mr. McCain?
Here.
Mr. Reeves?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Lida?
Here.
Mr. Page?
Here.
Mr. West?
Here.
Mr. Underwood.
At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Sammy Harris if he would give some information, please.
All right, Mr. Page. Heavenly Father, we pause, dear Lord, just to thank you for our many blessings which are too numerous to count, dear Lord. We love you. We thank you for loving us. Father, we just pray that you be with us tonight in this meeting. Thank you for our city, dear Lord, and for the freedoms that we enjoy in this city and in this state and in this nation, dear Lord. We just pray that you continue to bless us in all we do. Help us to always remember that we're in your presence and to be the hands and feet of Jesus wherever we go. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. McCain, you lead us, please, or lead us, please, sir.
I declare the ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to this meeting, he told members to give a minute for the October thirteenth planning committee meeting. There are no changes to the minutes. I will accept the motion to approve as they are written.
So move.
Second. Motion second. All five say aye.
Aye.
For today. Motion carries. This time, we're going to read subdivision. I will read subdivision case tonight. If you have any questions on any case that I read, you'll raise your hand. We'll move it to the end of the agenda. We had an opportunity to review on a work session and satisfy ourselves with questions that we had, but if you're here to ask or have any questions about our subdivision cases, we'd like to hear from you or any questions to what I just said. First case tonight is case S-091426. It's a final map approval for the code at McGill Crossing, a two-lot subdivision located along Rossbridge Bridge Parkway. Engineers comments are that no more than two acres of land is disturbed on the site. The house site must be below the power company easement. Fire marshal's comments are that the fire hydrant can be located between lots one and two on Rossbridge Parkway. Developer to pay for installation with three-year rental. Any habitable structure located more than a thousand feet from the proposed fire hydrant must have water source for firefighting approval by the fire marshal. Fire department access road should be designed and maintained to support the load of the fire apparatus shall be serviced and has to provide an all-weather driving capability. The grade of the road shall not exceed ten percent without the approval of the fire marshal's office, and no vertical construction will take place until worst blind road are installed and approved by the fire marshal. Who's here representing that case?
Joe Shafano, Engineering Design Group.
Is there any questions on that case? The next subdivision case we have is S-101428, clearing map approval for Rossbridge Cottage Phase One, proposed seven-lot subdivision located at 3100 Rossbridge Parkway. Engineers comments, it needs approval. Fire marshal's comments are the fire hydrant to be located in the following locations: intersection of Road A and D between lots 511 and 512, between lots 534 and 535. No vertical construction can begin without fire hydrants are installed and released. Fire department developer to pay installation and three-year rental. Who's here representing this case?
Jonathan Beltrane, Signature House.
Any comments on this case? Next case is case S-111433, clearing map approval for the Madoya Grove Phase Two, proposed forty-seven lot subdivision. Engineers comments, it needs approval. Fire marshal's comments are fire hydrants to be located in the following locations: intersection of Road C and Lot Thirty, Road C between lots eight and nine, Road C between lots nineteen through twelve, Lot nineteen and twelve. Developer to pay installation and three-year rental. No vertical construction can begin until fire hydrants are installed and released. Who's here representing this case?
Jonathan Beltrane.
Any questions on this case? All right, next case, case S-111434, final plan approval for the Park Crest Carriage House Center survey, proposed. This re-survey is to combine three lots into one. Engineers' comments, it needs approval. Who's here representing this case?
Jeff Beal.
Any comments on this? Next case is S-111435, this final map approval for the Paradise Lakes Estate, re-survey number two. The purpose of the re-survey is to combine two lots into one. Engineers' comments, it needs approval. Who's here representing this? No. No. Any comments on this case? Next subdivision case we have is S-111436, final map approval for re-survey of Lot One, HBHA, LLC re-survey. Purpose of this re-survey is to combine two parcels into one. Engineers' comments, it needs, engineers' comments, recommendations. Who's here representing this case?
Carl Moore.
Any comments on this case? The next subdivision case is S-111437, final plan approval for Southampton Phase Three, re-survey of lots 148 through 163, being a re-survey of lots 148 through 163 according to the survey of Southampton Phase Three. The purpose of the re-survey is to reconfigure the rear lot line on the block containing lots 148 through 163. Engineers' comments recommend approval. Who's here representing this?
Jonathan Beltrane.
Any comments on this case? Last case we have tonight is S-111438, final plan approval for a re-survey of Beaumont, Lot C2E, a proposed re-survey of one 2.2-acre lot into two 1.1-acre lots. Engineers' comments, recommend approval. Who's here representing this?
Jonathan Beltrane.
Any comments on this? Any comments on any case that I've read tonight? Any comments, members? I want to take a motion.
So move, recommend approval.
No motion, all second.
Second.
No motion, second. All five say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Nay. Motion carries. Next case tonight is conditional use case, it's 111418. It's US Steel Corporation requesting a conditional use approval for a park located at 420 Renaissance Drive. Who's here representing this case?
Dave Giddens.
All right, can you come down and tell us what you're doing, but just hear what you've got?
Good evening. The property before you is a property within the preserve, and it has been planned to be a park, and it's about a two-acre parcel. I believe we should have the maps that were provided to you. The park will have basically a grass lawn, a walking path, a small picnic pavilion, and a small top lot. Most of the trees in the park will be preserved, and will have natural areas in the tree cover. The rest of the area will be grassed.
What about lighting?
The lighting will be mainly the street lighting, but its parts in the preserve are not used after dark.
What about parking?
The parking, we believe, can be provided with the two-way street, on-street parking.
Any questions, please?
This park was part of a planned development at the beginning, so we're not looking at it, are we?
Here, Rock.
Yes. Anyone aye? Tell me your questions. I want to take a motion.
Mr. Chapman, I recommend approval.
Second.
No motion, the second. All five say aye.
Aye.
For today. I'd like to register my last thing, please. We've got one case tonight. I'm curious about this case. It's a conditional use, 111419, this issue approval for gas station convenience store located at 1801 Doug Baker. Who's here representing this case?
Mr. Chairman, my name's Lee Barnes. I represent Covenant Bank, applicant, in this. We have our engineer, Mr. Hager, here with us, and we also have the purchaser-developer high tide, that we're having to build. Questions going to, I can make a brief presentation if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Covenant Bank bought this property about five years ago, and they intended to build bank. That was their plan at the time. Well, with the economy and the way things have gone, they no longer need to expand their footprint, and have had the property for sale. The high tide people put the property on the contract, and they wanted to build that convenience store there. Well, some major questions that always come up in zoning, what is the zoning? I'm sure y'all gone to that. C1, we're asking for a conditional use. The city was kind enough to meet with us, and we did a conceptual drawing of our footprint, what the store's going to be, how it'd be laid out, and also did a landscape drawing. I'm not sure the landscaping was correct. We, the store will be approximately thirty-five hundred feet and have six pumps, and one thing that always comes up in zoning cases is talking about access, and we had met with the state and ADOT, and ADOT has approved a issue. Are y'all familiar with where the property's located? I need to tell you. If you're not familiar, I'd be glad to.
Yeah.
Okay. When you're coming towards 280, there's a turn line going into the site. They have approved us, they have approved us a turn-in-only, a turn-in-only there. ADOT, we have approval from ADOT to do that already from the state to get access in and out of the convenience store. Also, you talk about pre-imposed water. We have submitted to the city, there'll be no more water or no less water than there is there today, and there might be some questions on the lighting. The city had asked us to basically follow good zoning and proper lighting, and we're going to meet what the city asks us to do. I'd be glad to read the exterior lighting if you'd like, but it's not going to be open land and wide. It's going to be exactly what the city asked us to do. We'd be glad to do that. Also, there are restrictions and covenants in this, and this is a subdivision that was developed by vapor, and we're going to have to meet those restrictions and covenants. The building will be a brick building with a glass front. We're going to meet the signage requirements set out by HOOP. Whatever HOOP asks us to do, the signage requirements we're going to meet. If you, I'd be glad to ask you any other questions y'all may have. That's just to give you a basic overview of what's going to be there.
Okay. Let's see what, I'm sure there's some comments, but before you come up with Mike, and just answer some of your questions, let Mr. House read some of the conditions that the city has wanted posed on this property.
Listen, Mr. Chairman, there's six items dealing with signs and lighting for the purpose of making this a good paper. Number one, the canopy ban shall not be internally illuminated except for permitted signs. Two, the canopy sign on the east side of the canopy shall not be internally illuminated. That will be facing uphill, up Doug Baker Boulevard. Neon and LED scripts or exit lighting shall not be permitted on the canopy ban. Canopy lights that shine down on the premises shall be recessed until the canopy to minimize spillage on the property. Exterior light fixtures shall not exceed sixteen feet in height, shall be designed to shine light down upon the premises. And finally, internally illuminated building wall signs are prohibited on the south and east sides of the building, which would be, once again, the side going up Doug Baker Boulevard in the south, which would be the side of the back of the building facing the west, which would be.
Okay. Something I need to correct, this is a C2 zone blocking, not C1.
I'm sorry.
Just because it matters.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. We've got to make that correct. Can I ask a question? Yes, sir.
In addition to the covenants and restrictions that are on you, are you aware of these and are these acceptable to you?
Absolutely, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And then I heard you say that you are going to have brick, and so you're going to be compatible with the shopping center across the road, are we're not?
Yes, sir. And I've forgotten earlier my other presentation. Excuse me, I got a fudge nervous in this crowd, is that there is a berm in the back that was created when the subdivision was built for a buffer, and where are you going, I think we're going to have more buffer per our drawing, so just, we're trying to be good neighbors here. That's what we're attempting to do.
Mr. Barnes, there's also some trees on that berm, is that true?
I believe so, yes, sir.
That have been planted eight, ten years ago?
Yes, sir. We don't plant, we don't want to disturb that berm.
And those would not be disturbed?
No, sir. You have any more questions to me?
Can we put a restriction on gas prices or could we leave that alone?
I'm afraid I have enough control over that, sir. I would have to, let's say what I are now, if I had.
So, if you hear his response, we won't have to, if you hear all his response, you can get in on tape. Any other questions, Plan Commission? Okay. Yes, sir. You look like a man with a plan.
Yeah. I'm John Ritchie. First, I'd like to say, we addressed the situation eight or ten years ago when my mother was alive. We live on Fordcrest Drive, which is directly up against this property. My daughter lives in the house. She just purchased the house. It's directly behind it. I live in the two-story house, and we have someone that's paralyzed that lives, and lives at the level of what y'all are planning to allow. He has, not being able to walk in all his senses, his sense of hearing is unbelievable, and because he, when he had his accident, he bit his tongue off and was reattached, he's limited with his voice because of partial paralyzation of his voice, and we cannot put earmuffs on him at night, any service station. Anybody that knows that lives anywhere near a service station knows the noise, the traffic, not just the lighting. But I would like to address this. Eight or ten years ago, we came before y'all when they were asking that this property be rezoned to C2, and we were told that C2, because our concern was service station or chemicals, gas or chemicals, and we were told that was not allowed. We would have put up a fight had, this is not, and what I understand now, C2 does not allow this. You're asking for an exception. We thought that y'all would stand up and follow through with what we were told, or we would have fought, that it'd be changed, you know, keep it from being changed at that time, commercial. I will tell you, we addressed that these trees that were planted on this piece of, this berm or whatever, those trees were not planted. When they developed to Doug Baker, we came before you then. The developer cut every tree down without permits. He wanted us to sell our land. We refused to sell our land, so he terrorized us. He cut every tree down, exposed it back in my house. We had somebody actually trying to come in from the new Doug Baker, from the backside of our property. We've lived there since the seventies. Not a single time have we ever had a problem with anybody bothering us. Immediately, he cut every tree down, did not leave a buffer, period. We came before this council. We brought it to your attention. Y'all told him he had to fill in fourteen feet of dirt and plant it with shrubs and trees. He did not plant it, shrubs and trees. He didn't care. He laughed in my face and said, "My interpretation will be if we ever develop, if we have to." We came before you, nothing was done. They burned it out and drained all this water unto us. Fordcrest Drive had one pipe going under twenty-four inches. It actually went from 119 across our property. We didn't have problems with flooding. You put five or six ten-foot pipes dragging onto my property immediately turned us into a holding pot. Water came up within ten feet of my house. We came for this council again. Y'all told him, with permission from Asbury Methodist Church, y'all told him he had to open from Doug Baker Boulevard to Little Ridge, the ditch. His interpretation was to come pull my twenty-four-inch pipe up and have two guys there for one hour with a shovel, and laughed at my face when I said, "When are you coming in with the machinery to open the ditch up to get this drainage?" Nothing was done. I am concerned with spillage. It doesn't make any difference. It all compounds. You can get a thousand people stuck in to get gas, three or four drops at a time. You've drained it all on my property. The water table is like maybe ten inches below in wet weather, the ground. I have a creek. My creek will be ruined. I will have no animals. I will have nothing in the creek that comes across our property. You, you know, everything that I'm concerned with, I'm concerned with noise, with light, traffic. The neighborhoods down below me, Little Ridge and on further down, they're going to get the runoff. That's who these people are here. These are the people that are concerned. You're talking about this being three hundred feet from my house, three hundred feet from my daughter's house. There's no way to contain the noise, to do the noise. The trees that are on that piece of property were just left to grow. Most of them are trash trees. It was never planted. They showed us a nice, you know, drawing with shrubs and ground cover that came down and trees that would grow up, magnolias and whatever. None of that was done. None of that was enforced by you. So I have, I know my daughter has a whole list of items with concerns, and, you know, I wanted to bring it to your attention. We addressed this eight or ten years ago. We were told this zoning did not allow service station or chemicals, and we would not be here today with this, and I'm a little concerned that there was a meeting that we were not even involved in with all these plannings going. Nothing was ever even told to us, and we just only received this just days ago compared to the October twenty-fourth. So we are concerned, we are concerned, and I know that, you know, I have contacted, there's a new subdivision owned Doug Baker that's being built, and I talked to, I think maybe Horton Group or whatever, I talked to them. They were not notified. They're concerned. You know, probably can sell their houses for a hundred thousand dollars less when this goes up. Property value's going to drop. I've been out there since the seventies. I feel like we deserve to be heard. We live here, and we're going to be directly impacted more than anyone else. You know, I didn't buy this as an investment to turn it around and sell at some point. We bought it to live here, and with Jimmy living here, I think he wanted to actually try to say something, but with him living here, you know, it's a concern. His level is the level of the ground in our home. So, you know, he will be, the noise level, the lights, we purposely have a window up this side so that he could have light come in without having to have curtains over it so people couldn't see in. You know, you're putting something there that people are going to be able to see in. He's have, people will have no privacy. He will have no rest, and if he doesn't get rest, we don't get rest. You know, he'll be up all night long ringing for somebody. It just, you know, it's, we purposely lived in this area and kept it kind of secluded so that we could have privacy, and we have let trees and shrubs grow up to be buffers, but no matter what they do, that's, we're not going to be able, you know, to knock out that sound. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Ritchie.
My name's Terry Ritchie. I'm a brother. I live out here, and I've been out there since eighty-three. One thing that I wanted to mention, and I'll be glad to leave this with you, but I'd like you to Google. Living next to gas stations. We hadn't talked much about contaminants here, but there's plenty of information out there, and we live in one-family state dwellings, one acre. It seems like this is a big jump in variance to propose a gas station, so I went out online today. I pulled up Hoover, Auburn, Special Use and Regulations on the Gas Service Stations, it reads permitted only in Zone C3 and I-1. No gasoline service station located within a radius of three hundred feet from a place of public assembly. Right across the street is Edgar Bakery, and people assemble there six days a week. So there's those kind of issues too.
I've heard him use service station. Now, I'm hearing him use service station, and he's right, that's not permitted, but my interpretation of a service station is something that changes oil, fixes tires, and this is not a service station. Am I correct?
Have you guessed that?
Yes, this is just, this is the south of gasoline, but it's not a permitted use in C2, it's a conditional use in C2, and so that's why we're here tonight. Let me just read something. This article was issued just recently, about four or five weeks ago. It's online. Small spills of gas stations could cause significant public health risks over time. This is done by John Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health, published online September nineteenth in the Journal of Contaminant Hydrology. They've done mathematical and model studies. But what goes on to say research shows that you should be paying more attention to small spills, not just tank leaks. Small spills that routinely occur when you refill your vehicle's tank, and these small percentages reach the ground can be problematic with harmful chemicals, including benzene, and no cause of cancer. We live out there, and we've lived out there thirty and something years. We've got children and grandchildren. If you want to do the correct thing and the ethical thing, think of yourself, living out in the community, single-dwelling housing, and proposing pumping gas and lighting up the whole situation. He's already addressed, you know, the other problems with more transit, fumes, the whole situation. Put yourself in our shoes. That's all I'm asking. This could be, I don't think we're against commercial development, but it's got to be reasonable to jump from a state dwelling, single home dwelling, to somebody, to gas stations and the problems with contamination. And I can tell you, he addressed water problems the last two years. When it rained, I had standing water in my backyard. I ended up putting in, having to spend almost five thousand dollars for a swamp pump under my house to get it pumped out of there. So any rain runoff with these chemicals, fumes and stuff, I'd hope you just don't ignore the situation of contaminants. I'm sure if you had children and grandchildren, you'd feel the same way, and that's all I want to do is bring.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Consider what you've been saying.
I live on this property right next to the Covenant Bank at fifty-five twenty-one. So, my property is zero feet to where they're actually wanting to build a gas station. So, and I bought this house a month ago. So, I've actually lived my whole life since nineteen ninety, next door at my father's house at fifty-five twenty-five Ford Crest Drive. So, I've, I've not moved anywhere. I've lived there. The water does sit on his property when it rains to where you can't even drive on his driveway, 'cause not only is the yard flooded, it floods over the driveway completely. So, he does have a quadriplegic that has a wheelchair and you can't drive him through water, you can't drive him through grass, you can't drive him through anything. So, we do have the damaged water. And we have a dog. So, the last thing we would want is that soiled water on our property. But I do have some points. He did mention lighting and a few things, but I have a little bit more detail and points of why that's inconvenient to a neighborhood or houses next door to a gas station. I know that they are going to abide by the lighting issues with which angle, how bright it is, how they're gonna, the angle of the lighting and all of the things that the state or the city actually require them of. But more lighting is good at a gas station, it prevents crime, but obviously you can't sleep, see the sleep. We have Jimmy on the second level, so that's actually gonna shine into the house. But less lighting attracts crime. So, that's the last thing we want, is exposing our homes to a low-lighted gas station or a regular-lighted gas station in order for people to break into something that's not well-lit. So, it kind of counteracts itself. It's not helping us in either direction. The noise is not buffer. All night long, we're gonna hear it. This property actually is, from the foot of my property line to theirs goes right uphill, maybe six to twelve feet. So, they are significantly higher than us. So, we hear all of the noise from 119, from Doug Baker, and to put a gas station there is only gonna add the cars, the stereos, customer shouting, the air guns, I mean, et cetera. I mean, it could go on and on. This is extremely loud when it's, my property is zero feet to their property. I mean, we, we're next door. Unattractive customers. Competitive pricing attracts all customers. Cheaper prices, which is great for everyone, attracts unwanted customers. So, the crime rate can go up. Our woods are an escape route for criminals. So, yes, it's all public land, it's all commercial, and all the shopping centers that you'll be able to see anybody. We are the residential property that anybody breaks in, they're on our property escaping. And again, we have a quadriplegic. He cannot get up. Someone breaks in the house, he can't do anything. He rains, we have to come and help. We have to get him into the wheelchair van, which is a ramp, it's gotta bring it down. You have to get him in the wheelchair, down an elevator lift, out to the car. There's absolutely no way we can do anything if someone breaks in this house. And that, we're next door to it. My uncle Terry, who just spoke, he's next door to us. So, we're all a family, let it break. If something happens to any of our houses, it's more of a risk for someone that has a handicapped man in the house. We just, we can't get out that fast. And I also researched that six percent of all robberies are at gas stations. So, it's a very high risk to put something next to a residential. He did mention some health issues. I have a few points. The exhaust from idling engines, diesel trucks, lines of cars, the ozone issue, stations pump at least one million, one million gases, excuse me, one million gallons of fuel annually and high, ultra-high stations pump, three-point-six million gallons a year, causing nausea to cancer. Other health issues are the smell of gas, the dumpsters that if not covered, which people get busy, your store gets busy, you're gonna have a lot of garbage. So, even just the dumpster smell, the diesel smell. Severe threat to the ground and surface waters because of our water issue, this spillage at the pump, the source of fuel released into the nearby waterways, is one of the main topics. And I researched this today as the, the good and bad points of having a gas station next to your house. So, actually listed almost all of them as bad points into the coming of the health and the risking of your lifetime stores. So, I would hope y'all would consider that in your decision, because this is right up to our house. And my grandmother did plant some trevor and, and trees when all of these trees were knocked down, but I can see up to my back porch, I can see this property, which means the gas station and the people are gonna be able to see us. So, it's not full, it's not thick trees, it's just a small, thin line of trees and you can see right through it. So, and we own the property up against the trees, so especially if they're torn down or anything is built up against it, it's not something we can control, 'cause that's not our property. So.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Can I ask your name and address? So, let me get you on record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Don Irwin with Barber Companies, I live at twenty-three fifteen Farley Road in North Park, three-five-two-two-six. We have some concerns about the proposed use for this land. If you would look at the first map, it's right here as well, just so we're all on the same page. Our understanding of zoning has always been that if you have a commercial corridor like two-eighty, that the center part of the corridor where the road is is where the most intensive use occurs. And that as you get further from the center and you get toward the edges of the boundaries, that you try to transition to less intensive use so that you don't have an abrupt change from something like commerce, heavy, intense commercial to something like residential. And if you look at this map and you have a copy of it, this aerial, you see that happening at this location. It's several blocks off of Highway two-eighty. It's on the very edge of that commercial zone. You see, Barber Companies owns Cadence Place, which we bought about a year ago and put a lot of money into it, trying to make it look very nice. But you see around this site in question, you see a residential development, under development. You see a church, you see residential immediately behind it. And then you see very high-end office just diagonally across the street from it. And so, that, to us, illustrates a proper kind of development where you're transitioning away from the really high, intense commercial along an interstate or along a major highway and heading toward residential. We don't think that this proposed use for a gas station matches that philosophy. It's an intense use that will generate traffic. It will have lights at night. You can try to put some controls on them, but there's still going to be a lot more lights there now, or will be than there is now. We tried to understand the submission that we got. We asked for a copy of it. And it's very, very sketchy. If you look at your submission instructions on your website, it lists a whole lot of things that are supposed to be included with this, and very few of them were actually included. So, we're sort of having to do our own research a little bit. One thing it said was, okay, who are the Valero people? And we looked and found that they have some of the Petreps. We looked at the other stations in the metro area, and I think you have a handout showing the different stations around. And our conclusion is that unless you force them to do particular things, they're probably not going to do them. We looked at the deed for this property, and there are indeed some use restrictions built into it, but they're just that, they're limited from being something like a nightclub or an adult bookstore. Those, the restrictions that we found did not address quality issues about what the fit and finish of the property or the building would look like. When we saw this map that I think you have too, you see nice big canopy trees, but there's no indication of what's the planting diameter of the trees. You plant trees that big and it's gonna take twenty years before they create a significant canopy. So, that landscape plant, as shown, really doesn't indicate very much. We see a building footprint, and we hear that it's going to be brick. We heard that tonight. But if you're going to approve an exceptional use for this property, we think it's the least that the applicants can do to come up with a conceptual design that shows what it's going to look like. Just saying brick, brick can be a lot of different things. Brick can be ugly if it's not done in the right way. We think that's the least they can do, is to spend a little bit of time and effort giving better conceptuals of what this would look like. It's probably, I understand that they went to Albert and they got a traffic plan, and that's great, but undoubtedly this is going to generate some extra traffic, particularly if the gas station sells alcohol. That's, that's a question we have about it. And speaking of alcohol sales, this property is immediately above a church, as you can see over there. I don't know whether that's allowed in Hoover or not, but whether it's technically allowed or not, I think it's a factor that should come into consideration, particularly where this project's being placed. I think we have some real environmental worries about this project, some questions. Five or six, seven years ago, we built a shopping center at the Liberty Park exit off four-fifty-nine. You may know it, where Dairy Queen and Billious is. And when we built that, we were not allowed by the city of Birmingham to put a gas station there, because they said that they did not allow gas stations within twelve-hundred feet of the tributary at the Cohaba. In other words, keep gas stations away from water. If you look at the map that's third over, fourth over in this submission, and it's a map five or six that we pulled up directly from Good Earth, it actually shows a stream passing through the edge of this particular parcel of property. If you look, this is the site right here, immediately across the street, it's pretty much huge, lettuce right there. And although we don't have a topographic map, it appears that those are downhill where this site is. And even further behind this is another big lake. And so, in my opinion, there needs to be a lot more work done. Take, take what you see here, add to that what you heard from the other people talking tonight. And in our opinion, there needs to be a lot more caution before putting up a gas station immediately across the state of the United States. I doubt that's a true illustration there. You know, we know gas stations are safer these days, but rules abound there for a reason, because accidents still do happen. And so, we think that's something you should take into consideration. You know, if this project were closer to Highway two-eighty, if it were right along two-eighty, we could probably go along with it and understand it. But to me, to us, it does not go with the philosophy of as you get further away and get toward the edges of the zoned area, this is in no way beginning to transition into the other uses that you see that are adjacent to this area. So, we have a lot of questions about it. We don't, we don't frankly think that they've met the requirements of the submission document that's on your website. But this, when we asked for a copy of this, we got something that's perhaps one-fifth of one, or one-sixth of what's listed in the submission questions that are supposed to be allowed. So, we ask that you take all of that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Rob Turner. I live at forty-five thirty-four Little Ridge Drive, and I'm also president of the Little Ridge Homeowners Association. We are, our subdivision is located about a quarter mile, maybe a little further than that, from the corner of 119 and Doug Baker, right from this location on the same side of Highway one-nineteen. Many of my neighbors and I feel that a convenience store, gas station is not needed here. It will lead to more noise and more traffic and especially more potential crime in this area. We already have two gas stations within walking distance of this location and out more towards two-eighty, which we feel is a better location for businesses like this. My neighborhood is the nearest subdivision. We will be affected by this more than any other subdivision in this area. Most of our shopping and spending is done with Hoover businesses that are in our area along the two-eight corridor, Lee Branch and places like that. You know, so we, we have no beef with the city of Hoover or anything like that. I'm actually an employee of the city of Hoover for the school system, and I'm very proud to work for Hoover. As I said, our, our, our opposition to this is not directed at the city of Hoover. We just feel that this is not the best plan for, for this location, and I'm respectfully asking the zoning board to vote no on this request for the conditional use. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
My name is Ann Dean. I live in the Eagle Point subdivision out in Corfied Shelby County, a little bit further down in Little Ridge. Just wanted to protest this action, proposed action because of the increased traffic in the area. When Doug Baker Boulevard gets backed up and that becomes majorly congested, people will be tempted to cut through Eagle Point subdivision as a cut-through to cut off that corner. If you remember, almost two years ago, there was a small child that was shrunk by a car, by a non-resident, cutting through our subdivision in order to avoid the two-eighty traffic. And this will just make this problem much worse. So, I would like to just register our, our concern about this and ask if you vote against it.
Thank you.
Frank Mazara, Operations Manager for Edgar's Bakery, two-oh-three-seven Rusty Woods Trail. It's still that the additional traffic, Doug Baker, is not gonna be a good thing. Early mornings, turning into our shopping center, or we'll be directly across the street, will really congest it a lot more. Late afternoon, the same thing. So, we're opposed to it, just from disruption of traffic as much as any.
Thank you, sir. Do you want to have anything new to add? New information?
Okay.
Jimmy Watkins.
Hold on just a minute. We don't have to get you recorded, so let's see if we can get this microphone.
We will be affected by this more than any other subdivision in this area. Most of our shopping and spending is done with Hoover businesses that are in our area along the 2A corridor, Lee Branch and places like that. So, we have no beef with the city of Hoover or anything like that. I'm actually an employee of the city of Hoover for the school system, and I'm very proud to work for Hoover. As I said, our opposition to this is not directed at the city of Hoover. We just feel that this is not the best plan for this location, and I'm respectfully asking the zoning board to vote no on this request for the conditional use. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
My name is Ann Dean. I live in the Eagle Point subdivision out in Corfret and Shelby County, a little bit further down the Little Ridge. Just wanted to protest this action, proposed action because of the increased traffic in the area. When Doug Baker Boulevard gets backed up and that becomes majorly congested, people will be tempted to cut through Eagle Point subdivision as a cut through to cut off that corner. If you remember, almost two years ago, there was a small child that was shrunk by a car, by a non-resident cutting through our subdivision in order to avoid the 280 traffic, and this will just make this problem much worse. So, I would like to just register our concern about this and ask if you vote against it.
Thank you.
Frank Lazar, operations manager for Baker's Bakery, 2037 Rustic Woods Trail. We still that the additional traffic, Doug Baker, is not going to be a good thing. Early mornings, turning into our shopping center, or we'll be directly across the street, will really congest it a lot more. Late afternoon, the same thing. So, we're opposed to it, just from disruption of traffic as much as anything.
Right, thank you. Anyone have anything new to add? New information?
Jimmy Watkins.
Hold on just a minute. We don't have to get you recorded, so let's see if we can get this microphone. Get you a cord or whatever. You've got all this to mention, and we'll let you up here. We don't have that. Thank you.
It's nice to hear Jimmy Watkins. He's used to hearing himself with that microphone, that's why.
Can you put that one and that one up?
I think it'll start whistling.
Well, if it works better for him to do that one, we'll try it. Get him closer up to where we can hear him on the cord.
You afraid the light will bother him? He might be able to sleep. The gas station. With unsavory people. He's afraid, he said, that with it being a service station, if it gets robbed, he's right there on the level. He could get shot without being a, if shots are fired, he can't get out of the way. And if there's a fire, I cannot get out. The water, we've already covered the water. He had said earlier about contact. The noise. And the music. And all gas stations. They usually have loud music coming from the cars. With no sleep. He had said also that he was contemplating calling the Alabama disabilities, Alabama disabilities with concerns with, you know, with the service station being so close and at his level. And I don't blame him. He has to, he has to depend on everyone, pretty much. If there's a fire, if there's anything going on, he has to depend that someone else is going to be able to get to him. If there happens to be a robbery, and they happen all the time, up and down 280, service stations, there happens to be a robbery, or shots fired, he's right at the level. He's, I mean, his level is ground level of where he's living.
Thank you for coming down, Jimmy. We appreciate it. Do you want to have anything new to add to this case? I asked you a question. I had a couple comments today about right-in only. Can you explain what that is and what pre and post is, so everybody understands?
Well, one, I think, is the state routes. They have to go to state to get approval for that access. State restricted to right-in only. So, if you're northbound 119, you can turn right in, but that's the only move that's allowed off of 119. The full directional access will be on to Doug Baker. Pre and post is the pre-development rainfall, post-development rainfall. Typically, you have more rainfall exiting a site after it's been developed and impervious with paving and so forth, roof systems and so forth. The, I have a letter from the developer saying that they will match pre and post. In other words, they will detain on the side to equate those two. They will not discharge any additional water from the site.
I didn't have anything new. My name is Larry Johnston, and I live at forty-five forty-six Little Ridge Drive, until a gentleman just talked about the water drainage. Two years ago, I've lived there for thirteen years. I have not had any drainage problem. There's a huge drainage ditch that runs between Asbury, underneath the ground, by Asbury Methodist Church, and runs in the back of my property. My property line backs up to the Asbury property. When they built, started the new construction of the housing area and they started re, just as he said, started building things, my house, my backyard has flooded twice in the last two years because of construction and redesign of water. That drainage ditch is about the size, about the width of a normal residential street. It's fine as long as there's no construction or movement of dirt or anything else. We talked about drainage and all the stuff coming down. Only in the last two years has my property flooded. If they start another construction project and that drainage is not put underground and pipes, as we've said, large pipes put underground, that drainage will continue to flood that entire area. And when it rains, it might be there a week, it might be there three days. But when it floods, it floods it.
They have to detain, what he just said was, they'll have to detain the amount of water on site. No more water can leave the site as it is leaving that.
What guarantee of that? You say they have to detain it.
It's engineered.
Once they engineered the property and built the housing, I went over and talked to the, I mean, the day and half, I went over and talked to the construction, and they said, oh, no, it's not us. And it's obvious, people that live there, the folks that live right there know that that drainage is going to drink. It drains like that even without construction. There's water that comes down through that and runs up over a drain. Because there's an easement on the property that I own, and between my house and the next house up, there's an easement that you can't build in there because it's a low area. But that drainage ditch runs right in that drain. So, what guarantees are we going to have at Little Ridge and anybody else that lives in behind there, the church, Asbury? What guarantees are we going to have that that will, that property or that drainage will be, as you said, disposed?
Well, the only answer I would have of that is the city engineers would have to look at the engineers, the applicants, engineers have to develop a plan for detention. And the city's engineers will have to concur that it would detain them.
And you would have to approve that plan, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, we're asking if you do go further, or I'm asking if you do go further. We have another meeting prior to your approval of the plan to see if it meets our wishes.
It'll have to have the detention.
Okay.
Where it would be approved.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other new information, sir? You got new information?
Yes. New information that I, I'm concerned, you know, you said that city engineers have to approve it.
Tell us again who you are.
John Ritchie. The city engineers have to approve it. But he's asking what kind of guarantee? When y'all approved, when you approved everything else, you didn't follow through it. You dumped all this water on me, flooded my property, let this developer come in, flipped my pipe over. Supposed to open a ditch all the way up between Doug Baker and their subdivision. Didn't happen. Didn't follow through. Dumped all the water. And you're talking about containing water. You know, you can contain the amount of water that comes in and the water that goes out, but it's still contaminated. Once it's contaminated, it's contaminated. And it will be contaminated with spillage from normal people filling up their gas tanks. It will be, and it will be on our property, and it will be polluting straight on down through Shelby County and our water table and our water. And that's a fact. And I would ask you to please follow through with whatever decisions y'all are making with city engineer taking it and saying it, putting it on their backs. Make them do, let them come and fix the problem that they were supposed to fix years ago.
I can't, all we're addressing is not, sir, it's just different cuts. I don't have any knowledge of what you're referring to. I'm not saying it didn't happen, but all we can have is what they promised to me.
I would suggest looking into the records from the previous zoning meeting when we were told C2 wouldn't allow no gas, no gas stations. And you can say convenience stores or whatever you want. The truth is, it's a gas station. Thank you.
One thing I heard tonight was an application. Do you know the application that he, was there anything in the application that wasn't? And we will require that.
I think the gentleman had one map, the tree conservation, but there were two or three maps that were submitted to show the topography and the ingress and egress and the details and setbacks and the parking and all that as well. That map that we had a work session, just an overview to show the landscaping and all, but we do have technical documents that back up and comply with this.
You got all the done?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do you have a response?
Give a very brief response to one issue. This mayor, for not to speak this earlier, all, ADM controls all gas or service stations or convenience stores or whatever convenience store here is. ADM is very strict development regulation. If you do not meet the regulation, you will not be in business. It's very strictly wrong. I think you could tell the board that. I'm sure you already knew that. Bye.
Any questions from the panelists?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. What, Matt House, can you tell us the buffer that's there now with the evergreen trees? What's the average height of those trees?
They appear to be between twelve and sixteen feet, maybe twenty feet. They're on that berm. They're large pine, fairly large pine trees. And they're fifty feet, fifty foot wide.
So, they are evergreen, fifty foot wide?
Yes, sir.
Any questions, anything new from anybody else?
Is he referring to what trees are there for what he thinks are supposed to be there?
Wait, wait, wait. We're not going to talk from the audience. What we've got is a photograph. We know, we can see what's there.
Of the sixteen foot trees?
Okay. Any other questions, sir?
Could I ask for other questions?
Sure.
Let me put you on the spot. Based on your previous experience as a traffic engineer, does this kind of store generate traffic or is it primarily traffic that's already passing and it just stops?
The convenience mart is kind of a giveaway on that. It is convenience shopping and people are typically en route. Rarely do people make a special trip to a location like this. Typically, on the way home, on the way to work, you'll pull in there for gas or convenience items. It's a very high percentage of stops en route.
Any other questions?
Does the applicant state what time of operation they plan to use for this?
No, sir.
Should that be part of something we should consider tonight?
Certainly have that authority, yes, sir.
Did he say it's going to be a Valero gas station?
Yes, sir. That's what their cyclist said.
Okay.
Would you like to address that, Mr. Chairman?
Please. Here's your name.
We leave ours, represent, cover the bank and land owner. We would ask for twenty-four, but if this board hadn't thought for less, we could look at eighteen. I mean, most, that's what most of our convenience stores are.
Anyone else? New information?
No, but I just have a question.
You may just have to tell me where I have to go find this information.
I don't know, but then I'm just trying to learn. I'm sorry. But I'm Patty Turner, and I live in Little Ridge.
Okay, we got to get you recorded.
Okay, I'm Patty Turner, and I live in Little Ridge. Okay, now, we have a church that's right there on the corner, and it's going to be within a hundred feet of this gas, this service station or gas station or whatever it is. It's going to sell alcohol. How, what is, where do we find the regulations of what the city of Hoover has to, with a church within a hundred feet, I mean, of a business that sells alcoholic beverages? Because these kids are going to be out here playing in, they have, you know, they have upward soccer, they have all kinds of camps and stuff like that during the summer. And these kids play out in the park, and they have scouts, and they have, because the Asbury has a whole lot of scouting events. And then you've got these people that are coming up and buying alcohol.
Let's ask that, we'll ask that question.
But where do I find that information?
We'll find out right now.
Okay.
The city does not have a minimum distance, although before they can sell alcohol, they have to come back through this process and have a public hearing before the planning commission, city council for permission to sell alcohol. So, until that is approved, they can't sell alcohol. But there is no minimum distance in terms of feet from a church. But certainly approximately the church would have something to do with their decision.
Okay. I mean, so is that not something that we would need to discuss tonight or that they have any bearing on this? Would that have a bearing on their application at some point in time?
They will have to come back and apply for alcohol.
Okay.
It's submitted, alcohol is not permitted until a separate conditional use is approved by the city.
Okay. So, otherwise, it would just be a gas station then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
One more question.
Okay.
We're here tonight and called it requires conditional use. This property is owned C2. Can you list some things that can be built there without anybody coming here? They come in, get a building permit, and go build?
Well, a convenience store without gas, which is not very common, grocery store, drugstore, the shopping center across the street is owned C2. Any sort of retail other than things like auto repair, live entertainment, selling alcohol without a conditional use, things of that nature. Any retail is conducted inside.
Only reason we're here tonight is because they want to sell gas. Is that correct? They could build a convenience store without gas.
That's correct.
To follow up on Mr. Page's comments, I would add that there's a reason that, and I would remind my fellow commissioners, there's a reason that gas stations require conditional use. It's because I think each of them have to be individually looked at as to what is around those, and that's why the ordinance is set forth in Hoover require conditional use. And the folks who have come before us, I think, have reminded us of that. So, I would just remind us, there's a distinct reason why we separate gas stations from the standard C2 district.
All right. Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval, but I would ask for a roll call vote.
Now, the motion go out of second, is the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a, maybe an amendment or two to that motion?
You can suggest it and see if he would accept it.
First amendment I would make is that hours of operation be between 6:00 AM and 12:00 PM, not twenty-four hours. The second recommendation I would have, I noticed on the, on the site plan here, he's got oak trees, hardwood trees in the back that he's going to plant in addition to what's there now. If it is possible, I would suggest those trees be evergreen trees. Is that possible to do that much now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to make that part of the condition.
You accept that as part of your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
One other?
Before you go on that, I think you need to be more specific on your trees as to number or size or something, because I think that's too vague based on that thing. That's just my, that's my.
Well, he's got, he's got a number of trees here, but I'm not even sure what size he's saying. I don't see a size on it, but.
Mr. Chairman, what we could say is that the buffer is shown, be supplemented with evergreen trees approved by the city's landscape architect.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's acceptable.
Is that acceptable?
Absolutely. The third one was that no music, no exterior music can be played there.
That's not. Can't put that people in, say, noise, you're speaking. Do they have speakers?
No.
Do they have speakers that a lot of people can talk to, if they want inside if they're getting gas? We're going to make that.
Well, we wouldn't want to do that.
It's required by code to have a speaker, have an intercom system. Okay?
Just no music could be played exterior class.
Yes. So you want to recap this motion again to approve, subject to the three things?
I would add to his motion that time of operation be between 6:00 AM and 12:00 PM, that the additional evergreen trees be planted, should be approved by the city's landscape or the city landscape architect. And then no exterior music would be allowed.
Do the amendments to this motion have to be voted on before the court? Probably better, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, we clarify the time. I think it's 6:00 PM and not 8:00. The time of operation, what time?
6:00 AM to 12:00 PM night, midnight. 18 hours of operation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Vote on the amendments first. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to vote on Mr. Harris's amendments first and then vote on the motion. So you have the, you want us to state it one more time, just for your amendments only?
Yeah, the amendments only are to, hours of operation start at 6:00 AM, end at 12:00 PM midnight, which is 18 hours. Additional evergreen trees to be approved by city's landscape architect, create additional buffer, and no exterior music can be played.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
The motion is second. I will do a roll call vote on this also.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. McCain?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Reeves?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Mr. Page?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Now we'll address the motion. Would you make your motion, you're in first?
I would move for approval and ask for a roll call vote.
The motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. I want to ask a roll call.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. McCain?
Aye.
Mr. Reeves?
Nay.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Nay.
Mr. Page?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Nay.
Motion carries. We're adjourned.